It's seven o'clock. Call to order a meeting for the Normal Town Council for June 15th, 2020. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss. Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
You're on mute.
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Loren?
Yeah.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Here. You were unmuted Angie through the whole thing. Did you get it through?
Did anybody hear me? I'm not muted.
We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. It's going to take a few seconds to get a flag up. There it is. And we also have one public commentator who said he needed about 60 seconds to get in. So I would ask him to start that process now and will join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll wait just a second to allow our first public commenter to connect. It appears that we don't have a public commenter tonight. We'll go to the omnibus agenda. Items will be taken with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Items on the omnibus are approval of minutes of the regular council meeting of June 1st, 2020, and report to receive and file town normal expenditures for payment as of June 10th, 2020.
Move approval.
I can't, I can't.
I've got my.
I have to tell you folks.
Hand up.
I have a problem here. I can hear not one of you. Let me see. I am going to sign out very briefly and come right back in and see if I can't get it that way. My apologies on that. Pam, can you say something so I can?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
We're good now. We're good now.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what happened. Motion for approval on the omnibus, please.
I've got my hand up.
Thank you.
No, I have my hand up to.
You have an item to pull.
An item.
Which item?
Item B.
Item B. Motion to approve. Move approval.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Hi.
Ms. Cummings?
Hi.
Mr. Nord?
Hi.
Ms. Smith?
Hi.
Mrs. Loren?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
Hi.
Mayor Kuss?
Hi.
We have approved minutes of the regular meeting. Item B, report to receive and file town normal expenditures for payment as of June 10th. Mr. Nord?
Okay, so move.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Nord?
My question, I've got a question and a request for public education. But on page four, there are some property tax payments. One of those property tax payments is for 1100 Beach Street, which is a vacant lot. This is in the One Normal Plaza area. It's kind of where the building was that was torn down on that corner. Is this being rented? It is being rented?
No, I don't believe 1100 Beach Street. I believe 1100 Beach Street is a vacant lot. But I will defer to Mr. Day. I'm pretty certain of the vacant lot that used to be the administration building at One Normal Plaza.
Yeah. Ms. Reese is correct. That lot is a vacant lot. It was subject to buyback provisions under the agreement we had with the prior owner of that. Now that it was there for two years, now that that's free and clear, we're looking at possible future uses for that property.
Okay, my question is the property taxes. Since this is not rented, why are we paying property taxes on it?
We didn't apply for the exemption because it was subject to the buyback provisions. It wasn't a property that we felt was being used for municipal purposes under the provisions of division or Article 15 of the Property Tax Code. There are certain requirements that our property has to meet in order to be eligible for property tax exemptions. That's one of them is the primaries. It's used exclusively for municipal purposes. Since it was subject to that buyback provision, it was not, you know, really eligible for the exemption.
Okay, but going forward then?
Going forward, it will be there as we transfer the property, then it will come off of our roles in the.
Okay, because there are two parcels there. When you say as we transfer the properties, is this being defined as surplus property to transfer?
Eventually it will, yes.
Okay, and before it transfers, we will have a discussion to say it's surplus.
Mr. Nord, we have to do that by ordinance.
Well, it'll be, yeah, it'll be, and that's for the council, and we'll look at various ways of of uses for that property, either as a municipal use or as a transfer to somebody else.
I just want to be clear, because the last property we had last week was sold, and it was not declared surplus. It went under the municipal code instead of the state code. But as long as we've got that in the open, then the other parcels.
If I could, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just to be clear, if we get to the point of disposing of 1100 Beach Street, it could simply be through a RFP process where we wouldn't have to do a formal declaration of a property being surplus. We have options on how we can dispose of property.
Sure. My request is that we first identify it as surplus before we decide to sell it. Then for the other parcels that are there that were paying property tax, they're in the expenses. These are all, this is more for public education. These are all parcels that are being rented. And of those, I believe, Ms. Reese, there was one. It's a cell tower that we are being reimbursed the property taxes on. Is that correct?
That is correct. 1501 Warner Street. That's a cell tower location.
And the rest of these properties, we do not collect or we do not get reimbursed from the renter for the property taxes. Is that correct?
I would say that's probably correct. I haven't looked at their lease agreements to see what, how much money we're charging them per month. But my guess is we probably don't allocate the property taxes to those individual properties.
Okay, yeah, and I've looked at these leases here last year when we had this conversation. And the town does not collect enough money in rent to even cover the rent on these parcels, except for the cell tower, which we do collect rent. So that was the public education piece that I wanted to get out there. I have no further questions or comments for the expenses.
If I could add one of, some of these properties are vacant. So they're like 10104 East Beaufort, 101 East Beaufort is a parking lot, or excuse me, 100 East Beaufort is a parking lot, 104 is a vacant property. So we don't have any tenants to charge rent back to. Anyway, we have typically included 104 East Beaufort and 104 North Street as properties that are basically incubating small businesses.
Well, for the one that's a parking lot, is that a municipal use parking lot?
I would defer to Mr. Day and how that applies to 10104, 100 to 104 East Beaufort.
Oh, we can look at the lease on that and see how that would apply.
Because if my memory is correct, this is the one that's right next to the mural, the mural vacant lot, and then the building that the mural's on.
And that entire site was part of the pod's lease agreement.
I'm going to ask you to meet with staff on this, and we'll get the full answer on it. We can bring it up at the next meeting, but you're asking staff questions that they can't answer because they don't have the appropriate paperwork in front of them. So I would suggest that you reach out to Ms. Reese and Mr. Day. We'll get that information that you want to put out there publicly. We will be happy to do that.
Okay.
Ms. Cummings?
Hi.
Mr. Nord?
Hi.
Hi.
Mrs. Loren?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
Hi.
Mr. McCarthy?
Hi.
Mayor Kuss?
Hi.
The item is approved. General orders, first item of general orders is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for technical planning services with the McLean County Regional Planning Commission.
Move approval.
Thank you. This is a, this is our annual renewal with McLean County Regional Planning. We do this process every year to renew for planning services. Questions or comments? Please call the roll.
I've got my hand up.
Yes, you did, Mr. Nord. My apologies. Go right ahead.
I've got a comment, first a comment, lower my hand. So with this agreement, is there a contractor conflict of interest certificate, certification, similar to the one that the Ecology Action Center has in this packet? Do they follow the same contractor services conflict of interest requirement?
I'm not sure, Mr. Nord, actually. I do know the contractor certification that you're referencing. The Regional Planning Commission, the agreement we've had with them has been more of an intergovernmental agency type of agreement. So I'm not sure we have that contractor certification. I have not seen that in past agreements. So I don't believe it's been part of our McLean County Regional Planning Commission annual services agreement.
Okay, because there's one statement in this agreement that I think is excellent. And I really like this document. I think it's fantastic whoever put it together. But number one on it, it says conflict contractor certifies that no town of Normal, city of Wilmington, county of McLean, or Bloomington Normal Water Reclamation District Officer or employee has any interest in the proceeds of this contract, which, you know, this is nice because it just explicitly points out that there cannot be a conflict of interest. So I would like to motion that we add a contractor certification for services to any agreement, and specifically this one going forward.
It's not a motion we can make tonight. It's something we can put on a future agenda.
Why is it not one we can make tonight?
Because it's not on the agenda.
No.
We're taking new action. You're suggesting new action that is not on the agenda. Am I correct, Mr. Day, or am I missing on that one?
Are you, Mr. Nord, are you suggesting adding something to the existing contract? That is on the agenda? Are you looking to put language into future contracts?
No, on the existing, just adding this document, copying the one from the Ecology Action. Just adding it to it.
Is is the fact that McLean County Regional Planning is now under the umbrella of the county of McLean, doesn't that make this a pure intergovernmental agreement?
I don't know. I mean, the EAC gets funded by these same bodies, so we're not doing anything different.
We actually are. If McLean County Regional Planning is under the umbrella of McLean County, they're a unit of McLean County Government.
Okay, well, then I'll bring this up with the McLean County Board and recommend this to them.
Fair enough. Further on this, oh, Mr. McCarthy?
Be sure to lower my hand. There we go. Yeah, I just, I'm not sure I understand the rationale for including this. I'd, you know, Mayor, your point was something I was going to make initially is if this is purely an intergovernmental agreement, then we don't, there's not a contractor relationship that needs to be protected. So it would seem rather than changing something on the fly from the table that involves multiple agencies, that we should do some homework on whether or not a contractor agreement actually applies in this case. And so unless Mr. Day has something different to share, you know, obviously, you know, he's the legal authority here, not any of us. But certainly, you know, something to look at. But here on the fly, if we're not even sure it applies, I'm not sure why we would be doing that. So, thank you.
And we can certainly, I'm sorry, Mayor, we can certainly explore the application of that. The Normal Town Council is one of the appointing bodies of the Regional Planning Commission Board. So we'd have to figure out how that contractor certification applies when we appoint a portion of their Board of Directors. But we can, we can check into it, certainly.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Hi.
Ms. Smith?
Hi.
Mrs. Loren?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
Hi.
Mr. McCarthy?
Hi.
Ms. Cummings?
Hi.
Mayor Kuss?
Hi. The resolution is approved. Item eight is an ordinance conditionally approving the final plan for the re-subdivision of lots 2933 and part of Lot 30 in Garland Heights West subdivision at the corner of Fort Jesse and Susan Drive. Motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Hi.
Mrs. Loren?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
Hi.
Mr. McCarthy?
Hi.
Ms. Cummings?
Hi.
Mr. Nord?
Hi.
Mayor Kuss?
Hi.
The ordinance is approved. Item nine is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Bloomington, town of Normal, county of McLean, and the Ecology Action Center for the Household Hazardous Waste Collection and Facility Feasibility Study Program. Thank you. Is there a discussion on this item? Mr. Nord?
On this item, I mean, again, this is the item that's got the contractor certification that I like so much. Again, I recommend to staff that this gets included on any documents that we have. With the questions, the report that they have presented shows a net profit from their program last year of $18,982. Being that this is a nonprofit and subsidized by the municipalities that are members, has this profit been reduced from the amount of subsidy that they're being, that they're requesting of us now?
No, it has not, Mr. Nord. I've got both EAC Director Michael Brown on the line as we have Public Works Director Wayne Aldrich on the line who can answer direct questions. But no, we have not netted out this year's funding to reflect their savings from last year.
Okay, does that typically happen whenever we overfund?
Well, I believe that we, I believe the plan is for the additional additional dollars to be applied toward other expenses and other programs down the road. So I will ask Mr. Brown to articulate the plan for those excess funds.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to point out, the event costs are actually increasing. It seems like each time we do this, and at the same time, the private donations that we're able to raise to supplement the public funding are very variable. And so there's no ability to actually predict how successful that's going to be each time. And so these are in a reserved fund. The donations are considered restricted contributions by law that we need to use for household hazardous waste purposes. So we will use this for those purposes. This agreement in particular does seek to utilize those to fulfill one of the goals and objectives of the relatively new solid waste management plan that was approved just a couple of years ago, new 20-year waste plan. That one of the objectives, the highest priorities in the plan was to conduct a feasibility study for a permanent household hazardous waste collection facility, which would greatly increase our ability to capture more of these materials on a more regular basis in order to protect our local environment and water supplies. And so at this point, the fund that we do repay will be used towards that in the future. I definitely would be open to looking at the funding levels. If we're able to continue to raise private funds in excess, then yes, we definitely should look at the math if we're not needing all of the public funding that is being dedicated to this.
Yeah, I do, I do, I do like that you track it. So that's good because I know this is intergovernmental. So, you know, at some point, we may need to use that money, especially now with, you know, the economy, the way it is, and funding levels for government. So I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out and got it on the record. Then the other question I have is this money that you're asking for now, this funding, this is for a permanent facility. And my understanding from conversations with the town manager is that this is for a feasibility study that none of the governmental bodies have even discussed if there's a willingness to put funding forward for if, for, for an actual facility or to determine if there's even a need. So it seems like we're doing a feasibility study without a request for, for a facility.
If I may, so we're not asking for any funding for a feasibility study. That is what we're using the private funds for at this time. And so we're not asking for any additional funding. Actually, the town normals funding for this program is reduced this time, the first time that we've asked for this funding. And as well, the solid waste plan itself, that was a collaborative process by all the governmental entities, including the town, including town and normal staff. It did go through a public hearing process. It was vetted by the community and by elected officials. And so we actually have had in-depth discussions about the need for this feasibility study. We're just following through on what's already actually been discussed.
How long ago was that conversation?
Those are ongoing conversations we've had, at least for the time that I've been with the Ecology Action Center, which is about 13 years now. But the solid waste plan was approved, I think, two and a half years ago now. And so these, within that, that the town council did review and approve.
Sure, with the funding problems that we're forecasting, is it now the right time to move forward with the feasibility study, or is it better to save that money?
Mr. Nord?
For other things?
I'm going to jump in on this, and you have to understand that there are private dollars and there are public dollars. And Ecology Action Center is not a governmental entity. And they serve multiple clients, not just the municipalities and the county. And they do work for these people, and they're given dollars to do this kind of work. So for us to, to try to pick apart their budget, when the part of the budget Mr. Brown is referring to are private dollars, I don't think we have a say in that.
Okay, so then this $25,000, zero of this is going, of this taxpayer money, zero is going towards the feasibility study. If that's the, if that's the answer, then you're right. I don't need to worry about it.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Is that accurate?
If you want it to be accurate, it's accurate.
It's not if I want it to be accurate. Is it accurate?
Mr. Nord, we'll talk about this another time.
But this needs to be answered in a public.
I will say that there is no $25,000 a pound money going to a feasibility study.
Okay.
That was made very clear in prior comments. So we'll reinforce it again for you if you didn't hear it the first time.
Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy? I'm thinking, Mr. McCarthy, if I would suggest that, given your experience with. given your experience with five oh one C threes, and this may already be part of your conversation, the fact that a five oh one C three doesn't have to have a zero profit line at the end of a fiscal year.
Yeah, that's from a business management perspective. Obviously, Mr. Brown's the head of that agency. I'll let him worry about the five oh one C three rules. But certainly that's a, a nod. And, and again, just want to kind of level set the conversation here is that for us here on the town council, our, our reach extends the amount of funding that we give the EAC for the activities for which we contract. So wholesale discussion about profit and loss in the EAC, I think, is inappropriate because we're not an overseer of the entire operation of the EAC. It is an independent five oh one C three. So if they have a profit or don't, that's entirely up to them. But again, being around the EAC and the council for quite a while and on my private side before I was on the Normal Town Council, participating in and, and supporting the household hazardous waste, it's a great program. I'm sure Mr. Brown can attest that private funding has been inconsistent at times over the years and not as significant as it has been. We are very fortunate in our community that we have the private donor base that Mr. Brown and his team has been hard at work to secure. It'll be great in the future if that is consistent and Mr. Brown and his team are as successful as they've been that we can look at reducing. And I know from your comments just tonight, Mr. Brown, you're more than willing to, to look at that. I think, you know, at the high level, I think we need to keep focused on, on the data that's coming out about this activity. It's broadly embraced by the community as a whole, not just normal residents, but Bloomington residents and, and, and people around the county and outside the county. So I think it's something that taxpayers want, and they're demonstrating by showing up. It provides an excellent opportunity for us to frankly get rid of some stuff that hopefully wouldn't get dumped down drains and, and into sewer systems and stormwater drains and end up in our creeks. I think that's really the thing that we need to focus on. And how often does a municipally funded program like this that is reducing toxicity in our groundwaters and our streams and our lakes, running a good opportunity for citizens, end up costing us less money? That is a rarity. And so I want to make sure that we are not losing the forest for some bark on a tree. And I want to commend you, Mr. Brown, and your team and the staff are in town of Normal, and I know City of Bloomington and the county, you work with a lot of different groups and people involved in, around the community. And the great work to be able to do this and have such a good, successful event and end up costing us less money is really unheard of. So thanks for your work, and I'm supportive.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Loren?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
Hi.
Mr. McCarthy?
Hi.
Ms. Cummings?
Hi.
Mr. Nord?
Hi.
Ms. Smith?
Hi.
Mayor Kuz?
Hi. Resolution is approved. Item ten is an ordinance delaying fee increases for water, sewer, and waste collection from April first, twenty twenty to July first, twenty twenty.
I move this aside.
I'm going to give that one to Karen Smith, second by Mr. McCarthy. Questions on this one?
If I may, start the conversation?
Yes, ma'am.
So we had previously approved these rate increases to go into effect April one at the beginning of our fiscal year. And shortly thereafter, the world turned upside down. And in recognition of that, one of the things that was done was to postpone these rate increases to July one. But that was early in the evolution of this pandemic. I, I would ask if it's possible to have a repeat of some of the core information about the capital expenditures that are funded by these rate increases and the fact that we're both, we're talking about in both instances with water and sewer enterprise funds that are supposed to be self-sustaining. So if I, I had made this request earlier, and I believe the relevant department chairs are available, and I'll defer to the city manager to direct the discussions before I have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. The, the ordinance as presented tonight in, in the council report that explains it is identifying that the delay of, of the fee increases from April first, which was the planned and budgeted timeline to increase fees to a July first date does impact our revenue streams for the fiscal year. And so that was the goal of our report, to point out that this three-month delay between April first and July first does have a monetary impact to the tune of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand in terms of lost revenue from the water fund, impacting the water fund, the sewer fund, and the general fund. In regard to the capital projects, one of the things that we wanted to point out to council is for enterprise funds, which are water and sewer, the fees that, or the, the revenue that's generated through the user fees, which applies to consumption, are what support the entire water operation and sewer operations. So that includes not only their operating expenses, but also their capital investment. One of the things that we're proud to share with council is that since fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, in the water fund, the town has invested over eighteen million dollars, near almost eighteen and a half million dollars in our infrastructure. That's water main replacement projects, that's improvement to the treatment plant, that's new fire hydrants, things like that. So what we generate in revenue, we reinvest into the system. And of course, we also make sure we maintain a specific targeted fund balance. So that's our goal. And I have asked both Public Works Director Wayne Aldrich and Water Director John Burkhardt to kind of identify some of their capital projects. And, and this year, council could look at, at the budget if you, if you wanted to down the road, but all of our capital projects are identified in our capital investment plan, which was adopted in December and reflects on the town's website. And our budget document also identifies some specific water main replacement projects and sewer projects that we are, that we have planned for this year. The capital investment program actually reflects projects that we have identified for a five-year period. So when we talk about our revenue stream for this particular fiscal year, it impacts our planning for all five years because we do a five-year budget. And Ms. Smith, I saw that. Do you have a question before we go to Mr. Burkhardt?
And I didn't write it down, so it slipped my mind at the moment.
Thank you. So, Mr. Burkhardt, can you share a couple of your capital projects that you have underway and, and planned for this fiscal year and perhaps next?
Yes. So for this current fiscal year, we've got planned to rehab two wells, what we call our well sixteen and well one hundred. That will involve just general maintenance and repair on it, pulling pumps, checking the screens, providing any sort of treatment to those wells to make sure that they maintain efficiency and we can get the maximum water out of those wells that we can. We've got an Oak Street water main project that's out for bid currently. That's to replace about six blocks of water main along Oak Street between Phoenix and Stewart, as well as replacing some water main along Stewart Street and Phoenix Avenue. Stark currently, council awarded, I believe back in March, a contract to Stark Excavating to replace the water main along Adelaide, Bryan, Willmette, and Gary Court. Council also approved a contract to Doug Gildner earlier this year for water main replacement along Jersey Avenue between Apple Parkway and Robinwood. We're working on replacement of, or design of replacement for water main along Main Street down around Hovey Avenue towards the ten-ten South Main property. Out, out for bid currently is to replace the stand, emergency standby generator at our West Booster Station located on College Avenue. And I believe that's the majority of, of the capital projects we have for this year. There's also some well replacement, replace some roofs on four of our west wells, replace some of the stucco wall here at the water treatment plant, and replace some deteriorating drains at our distribution facility on Pine Street. That total is just shy of three point eight million dollars worth of capital projects that, that we are planning for this year.
If I may, so I wrote it down this time. My, my question, I'm aware that in the area of sewer maintenance, there had been a backlog of work that had been neglected combined with the now enhanced ability to camera the, and the systems so that there is a more proactive ability to, to see and anticipate projects rather than just react. When you're mentioning the amount of expenditures for water, had there been a time when we, as, as a municipality, had not been as proactive in keeping current with our systems that is calling for this type of expenditure now?
I believe prior to my starting with the town, some, some of the, the water main replacement and capital project replacement was a little less successful. I believe the Maplewood project back in two thousand and three, I think that that, that project itself kind of really kicked off the water department's more aggressive approach to replacing old water main, substandard in size water main, and then water main that produces water quality issues for the residents.
I would add to that, that the council shortly after that, Mr. Burkhardt is correct, came up with the creation of a capital improvement plan. As Ms. Reese pointed out, we adopted in December. That plan is on the, on the town website. It's a very, very interactive document. So if people want to see what we're doing this year, all they got to do is pull that up. We approved, we approved the work for the coming year, and it's all in, in as much detail as you could possibly want in that document, and it's available on our website.
And when mention is made of the, the, the forfeited revenue by postponing these fee increases and pushing them back to July one, that adds another burden to the budget for the year on top of what we had already identified as a potential ten million dollar shortfall. So that if, if we continue to postpone these rate increases, the, the potential exists for borrowing from our children and our grandchildren if we create problems down the road or, or having to make up for a shortfall at a, at a future date. And is that an accurate statement?
Ms. Reese, I think that one's to you.
Thank you. The, specifically in regard to the general fund, the proposed waste fee is the largest revenue producer here in our list of fees. That does directly impact the general fund. The general fund is the, basically the checking account, the, our, our, our account, financial account that we are projecting a ten million dollar hit from COVID. So the, the impact of lost revenue, perhaps, it might not be the best way to put it, but the reduced revenue from our planned waste fee increase directly impacts the general fund. This would be a very difficult year for the general fund to absorb that when we are already trying to address COVID.
I will defer my questions for a later time and, and yield the chair to anyone else that wishes to be recognized.
Mr. Nord?
Mr. Nord, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. A question to Mr. Burkhardt about the projects that he mentioned. Are any of those projects, in addition to what was previously included in the current budget?
No. Now, all of those projects would be listed in our, in the budget.
Okay, good. And are reserves for these funds, are those reserves fully funded?
Are, are you asking if we're meeting our targets in our reserve?
Yeah.
I will take a quick look to be certain, but I believe we were meeting our targets in four out of the five fiscal years, but I'm looking to see if Mr. Hune is on the call. He might recall specifically. I've got the budget in front of me. I can take a quick look, but.
As long as it's within the first couple of years, you know, going out further, I don't know if this is relevant right now.
My recollection was that water fund was meeting our target fund balance goals in four of the five years, but I'm not certain offhand without taking a look.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine as long as we think it's meeting the target within the next few years. You know, a part of having reserves is so if we do come across an emergency or something unforeseen, you know, we use it. And this whole COVID issue, this is definitely something that we're going to be dipping into all kinds of reserves because that's what they're there for. But another question I have is, well, so all these projects, this is all based on what was in the current budget. Now, with ISU being gone and businesses closed, have we seen any reductions in input costs since we're not generating and making or treating as much water?
In fact, Mr. Burkhardt does have gallons treated information, just in terms of our, our water distribution in the last, basically April and May, the most recent two months. In April of twenty twenty, we did generate slightly less water based on consumption than we did in twenty, or excuse me, slightly more, about eleven million gallons more generated than in twenty nineteen. But in May, it was significantly less consumption than in May twenty nineteen. So we have found that our water consumption oftentimes is driven by weather than by ISU students being present.
That's interesting. Then on April sixteenth, the Jersey Avenue Water Main Project, that one came in under budget. This was in the twenty twenty-one budget, capital budget, which is the year we're talking about. That came in four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty-seven, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars under budget, under what was budgeted. With this report that you've got before us today says that if we don't do anything, the town's going to have a two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar shortfall. Well, just this one project alone is, gosh, a lot more, almost two hundred thousand dollars more in savings. Then on April thirtieth, there was a sewer lining contract, which is in the same sewer capital capital investment fund. That came in with a budget savings according or the staff report of three hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars under budget. So that gives us a total budget surplus right now of eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So what you're asking for tonight is two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. I just can't wrap my head around the need for raising rates and fees on our citizens at a time like, well, at a time like now, when many have lost their jobs, their businesses have closed, you know, they've been out of work for months. You know, I think this is just the wrong time, and I don't, I absolutely do not see a need for it.
Just, just to clarify, the two hundred, Mr. Nord, you're, you're referencing a savings in the water fund, this project savings in the sewer fund from two specifically bid projects where we got excellent bid submittals to the, the two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars that I referenced in the report. That, just to be clear for everyone's understanding, the two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of un, un, basically lost revenue from what we budgeted. includes water, sewer, and general fund. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that the general fund is a hundred and thirty four thousand of that dollar amount. In regard to the great bids that we received on those two projects, one in water, one in sewer, we hope that trend continues. We don't always have that kind of bid response, and if if that trend continues, that's great. We staff would come back to council and say that we would be in a great position to add more capital projects to our list then. But I just wanted to be clear so everyone understood that the two fifty eight includes the Water Fund, which is one account, the Sewer Fund, which is another account, and then a hundred and thirty four thousand, which is the General Fund.
That brings up a question. With the town being a with the type of municipality we are, are we able to legally transfer funds or borrow from one fund to the next, being home rule?
Well, Mr. Day can respond to the home rule situation. I would suggest that the town has not ever gone to the point of borrowing from our enterprise funds. We think that's not a financial strategy that that is best for our organization. The Water Fund and the Sewer Fund are utilities and best practices in terms of government financing, financial accounting is to keep those utilities basically clear from trying to subsidize the general fund or vehicle replacement fund or any other fund. I do know that this question has come up in the past, and so Mr. Hune has explored kind of the best practices and the expectations from government, a government audit auditing firms, excuse me for getting caught up in my words, but so I said, Mr. Hune has just joined the the group and turned on his his video, so I'll let Mr. Hune explain what the position of government auditors has been on mixing your utility funds and your enterprise funds with general fund or other funds.
Yeah, actually, before before he does that, I just want to point out that if we didn't have the economic disaster that's going on right now, then I would not be for trying to borrow from any fund. So please, Mr. Hune, whenever you speak to this, remember, this is a very unique time that hopefully none of us or our children ever see again in the future. So, you know, we may have to do things that are unorthodox. And, you know, look in, look out for the best interest of the taxpayers, the ones that have not been able to earn.
Just just to remind on this, Ms. Reese, Mr. Burkhart, Mr. Hune, and Mr. Day are here to give counsel to say advice for decision making. These, the things that you're asking of staff are are council decisions, and we will be handled by the the seven of us. They will make their recommendations to us. It's up to us to decide what we're going to do going forward. So, Mr. Hune.
Sure, I can I can simply add that, you know, governmental financial accounting requires a significant separation between enterprise funds and general general fund. You you can do inter-fund transfers for uses of services. That's fine, kind of intercompany stuff. If it comes down to a borrowing situation where general funds are borrowing from Water Fund or Water Fund borrowing from General Fund, I enterprise fund, which is our metal fund, then it really becomes a formal decision on the on the council's part where there's actually a kind of a formal loan agreement between the two funds, the two entities, essentially, to to have that documented. It's it's not done very often, and to be quite candid, if you if you are borrowing from the the enterprise funds or a general fund or vice versa, there's been a failure financially on some side. They're either governmental side or enterprise side that is frowned upon. They're both separate entities. They operate separately. They have super funding sources, and they're not to be mixed. You can mix them in terms of a loan agreement for capital funding needs between two of them, but if that's going on, there's a deeper problem in the organization that needs to be examined, but it it can be done. It's very rare, but it comes down to essentially a legal agreement between two funds that's approved by the council, and it's a longer, basically, between the two funds.
I'm going to go to Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Nord. If you've got more, we'll come back to you. You've exceeded your ten minutes under Robert's rules, but you have another shot at the another bite at the apple here. So I'll go to Mr. McCarthy.
Thanks. I'll go ahead and lower my hand. Okay, I guess, kind of, again, to try to level set this conversation in a broad spectrum of what our roles and responsibilities are. There's been a lot said that I think is micro focused rather than our role is, you know, basically, I guess, maintaining a healthy water system that provides safe drinking water is in the very best interest of the taxpayers of the town of Normal, and frankly, that's our charge. Deliver safe water, drinking water. Now more than ever, I think that's come to light when when there was a rush for supplies at grocery stores, water was one of those things. The safe and effective drinking supply requires us to invest in that system routinely. There was a period of time, Mayor, I think, believe, alluded to it, where the town did not invest in infrastructure as, you know, such a structured way that we are today. Mr. Burkert mentioned about becoming more aggressive in that investment. And I remember there was a period of time when some of our previous, recently previous council members recounted where we had almost a fifty percent increase in water because we did not do regular structured investing in the system. I've been very vocal about this. I am zero interest, zero interest in disinvesting in our water system. I think this is a very difficult time in our history. This is something we're going to be talking about twenty three, forty years from now, twenty twenty, and I don't take that lightly. But I also don't take safe and effective drinking water and investing in that system lightly either. And so for us, I think that in the grand scheme of of money, we're identifying a potential ten million dollar shortfall in the general revenue. Now we're talking about going into other funds and pulling out emergencies. Reserve funds are for emergencies. The Water Department has emergencies all of the time. We have water main breaks. We also have capital project overages. None of those have been discussed. I my fear is is that we're micro focusing down onto two little instances in one tiny little slice of time, and we're losing the broad perspective of a thirty, forty, fifty year municipal water system and our responsibility in it. That responsibility in it is to put money aside routinely to make sure that when water main breaks, that we have money. Those can't be budgeted because we don't know how many water main breaks there will be. And so that savings account, if we go into it and spend it down for operations, then when those emergencies happens, we don't have capital. Period. I'm not interested in spending down our reserves for operations. Again, I think Mr. Hune politely talked about that, is that that will spell future large problems for our water system. I think also some projects were being mentioned. I just want to level set again on that conversation. Jersey Avenue Project is just underway. We've got a quote on it, and it's come under budget, but that doesn't mean, you know, we often have overages and changes and different things as they get into doing the street. So I don't want to pronounce a success or the size of a success before a project is barely underway. And so I think it's really important, you know, I live half a block from there and going by there every single day, and they're just really getting underway. So before we start celebrating a massive success, I think we'd better wait till the project's done before we do that. I'm certainly sympathetic. I, you know, I've been affected. I believe almost everybody on this call has been affected in some way, shape, or form. I know there's some citizens of the town in Normal that have been affected very significantly. And again, I don't take that lightly at all. But we also also can't spend down all of the reserves when we're looking at some very large shortfalls in revenue with our general fund. And so we have to maintain some where we won't be able to address emergencies and ongoing maintenance that's required for us not to fall behind. We have more, but I'm going to yield now, and we'll address those later. Thank you.
Add to your comment, Mr. McCarthy, the the fact you've mentioned that there are people with the stressed economy out there that we do have an agreement that we will not shut water off to any any customer because of their inability to pay. We will work with them to make that happen, but tough times will not cost you your drinking water. Ms. Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, thank you for Mr. Councilmember McCarthy for for some of the things that you said, but I feel like I really need to bring this back to what we're here for today. I think we've gone way off the market here. The item one here is not about whether or not to do the increase. We've already legislated that on the table and have put out there what we need to do. Thank you, Councilmember Smith, because I do think some people probably needed the refresher. So I think having that as a kickoff was a wonderful piece so that we can remind people how we got here and what what is the plan. And also, thank you, Mayor, for reminding people that we understand this is a very tough time, and we know that we we're we're also very careful about how we are approaching this, and we are not shutting off water. But today, our main focus, according to our agenda, is not to to re legislate this. Our our focus here is are we going to change the date from April first to July first? And so we have to think that about what we're here for, instead of getting to the nuances and the weeds and try to re legislate already what we've put on the table. And so if if you're interested in what we what each of us said or how we stood on this issue, please feel free to go to that meeting, but I feel like we need to get back on task and focus on what's at hand, which is, do we approve yes or no to move the date from April first to July first? Thank you.
Ms. Lorenz, and then Mr. Preston.
Okay, well, Ms. Cummings was reading my mind. I too want to reiterate what the real issue is here, which is a matter of date and not a matter of if we should raise these rates or not. I'd like to offer the historical perspective on the garbage and the sewer rates in years two or three for them. They were about a year apart of what I believe was a five year rate restructure. So I don't want that to get lost in what appears to be a lot of of discussion only about water. That's not the only utility that we're talking about here tonight. The water bill is heavily weighted with a number of issues, and so a lot of times everybody just starts to think about it as all water, but it's, you know, it's everything from binward to water to sewer and your garbage. So there's a lot in there. And so so those first two, the the garbage, which is funded out of the general fund, that's part of a five year rate restructure where we were looking to make a a better structure for what's supported through revenue coming in, the fees coming in, and what's subsidized by the town. And the sewer was restructured because the funds available for capital improvement were becoming dangerously low. I mean, even anywhere close to targets. So those were actions taking taken, like I said, two or three years ago to get those parts of our house in order. The water is perhaps unique in the sense that it is one that comes up every year as just a two percent, two percent. And this has concerned me too, because it seems like it's just always coming back to the well, no pun intended. But that one, that one is of concern to me in this discussion tonight, and I'll just leave it there for now. What I want to go back to, though, is a potentially dangerous proposition of embracing the unorthodox. That caused me to raise my hand right away because the unorthodox may be a slippery slope into something that's unethical or maybe even illegal. I would rather us focus less on the unorthodox and more on seeking greater efficiency and seeking greater creativity in how water is treated and distributed and how sewer is is handled and and so forth. So I just want to put that out there that I was very concerned to hear Mr. Nord that you might advocate for unorthodox behavior. Thank you.
Mr. Preston.
Thanks, Mayor. My remarks here will be pretty brief at the moment. I would echo a lot of Councilwoman Lorenz's earlier comments about the differentiation between sewer and garbage and water. And in reference to Mr. McCarthy on talking about investment versus divesting into our water system, I would echo absolutely that we don't want to, I don't want to divest in our water system, not have safe water, not have clean water accessible for the people normal. But again, to keep everything in perspective, that's that's not exactly what we're talking about tonight with water. It is a two percent rate increase. It's not going from taking the rate down to zero where we get no income from the water bill, but it's a two percent increase that comes to us every year. And we're talking about a forty eight thousand dollar difference thus far. And that I want to make sure that that point was clear on anybody listening or watching.
Ms. Smith.
In in the interest of compromise, I would like to propose an amendment to the agenda item and ask if it would be possible to continue with the rate increase for sewer and trash to be effective July one, but postpone the water increase to October one because although Ms. Reese had shared with me the usage amounts, and surprisingly, there wasn't that dramatic of a drop in usage, even with the with the loss of ISU students. We are having in the summer months individuals watering their lawns. Gardening is the one thing that is a safe activity to do during this pandemic. And if if people have fluctuating water bills because of the nice weather, because being out in the yard, because of using the sprinklers for their kids to cool off or baby pools, it it might be an onerous increase even at two percent, so that if we were to postpone that to October just for the water, it would be a a way to recognize that the added burden to the the residents who have not been able to continue working, they they are facing an uncertain future. I'm not sure of the 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 language of it, but I'd like to ask that such an amendment be considered.
We have a motion for an amendment. Is there a second?
This is Kathleen. I'll second.
Thank you. I I will say to your comments before we go to others on this item. It's impossible to predict summer use. And COVID has obviously thrown another unmeasurable at us, if you will. Gardening happens every summer. Sometimes the water use is very high because it's a very hot, dry summer. Sometimes it's not, and we just don't have that crystal ball going forward. So I just, I want that to be out there as part of the discussion on this. And we're let me take a look at the list. Ms. Smith, would you lower your hand?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
You and Mr. Nord, you haven't from the previous one, but I think if you would like to go, if you have a comment on the amendment?
I do. I think that the amendment is a good start, but I still want to point out that we are still collecting money to add to the funds. We're not stopping to collect money. I think the best thing we can do to show the residents we care is not to raise any of these fees on them unless we absolutely need to. So I'm interested to see. any of these fees on them unless we absolutely need to. So I'm interested to see what other folks' thoughts are on possibly adding the other items to this delay.
You could entertain that motion when we finish with this one, but we are discussing an amendment on extending water at this point.
We can always amend or request an amendment to her amendment.
What I would prefer is we take it as a separate amendment. Mr. Preston.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick comment in response to Ms. Smith's amendment. Another component to this, while water usage, Mayor, per your remarks, is unpredictable in the summer. One of the dynamics that we are facing this summer uniquely in Normal is that our public pools are closed. And as a result, I would predict for a number of the kids and families who are at home who don't have Fairview or Anderson to go and splash around at, you may see, we may see more kiddie pools, more slip and slides in the backyard, those kind of things that I, I would venture to guess. And again, you know, only time will tell, but I would venture to guess that that would be a contributing factor into higher water usage for our normal residents this summer as compared to others in the past. And as a result, I'd be inclined to support Ms. Smith's amendment.
And I, I'll put on my retailer hat and know what's going on in the marketplace. I'm pretty much here to guarantee you that if you go to your local store to buy a slip and slide or a pool, there won't be any. It's a true and-
Because they're sold out, right? You're agreeing with my point?
They're, they are sold out. They're gone. Or they, they never were there in the first place. The supply chains have been disrupted unbelievably. Further discussion on the amendment to move water to October 1st. Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Ms. Cummings?
No.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Coos?
No. The amendment is approved. Now, we're back to the other, the overarching. Mr. Nord, I'll give you the opportunity. You indicated you might want to add another amendment, so this would be the appropriate time to do that.
Sure. Seeing how in sewer savings, we've got almost $400,000, and sewer here is 76, so there's many times extra savings. And sewer fees and usage are directly related to water. And as was mentioned, a lot of this water usage is going to be used on pools and gardening and things that are not going to tax our sewer system. So, I move that we delay the sewer fund increase to the same October 1st timeframe.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, so there can be some discussion.
Thank you. Discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Ms. Cummings?
No.
Mr. Nord?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Mrs. Lorenz?
No.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Mayor Coos?
No. Amendment fails. We're back to the overarching agreement, which is a, what we're looking at now is delaying fees to July 1st for garbage and sewer until October 1st for water. Am I, is that everybody in agreement on what we're voting for there? Okay. Further discussion on Mr. Nord.
I have a question. So with this amendment change, what is the impact to residents? What will they see for this, for this delay? How much is this $48,000 reduction saving them? Or I guess it's not even 48. It's whatever 48 is divided by the number of months to October.
I think it's 11 cents per thousand gallons per month.
Well, I guess I, I would respond that there, what they've been paying all along for water would stay status quo. So, that is reflected on page 10-3 of your council report. So, basically, for another couple more months, three more months, the water charge would remain at $6.50 per thousand gallons, and the system maintenance fee would remain at $5.99 per month.
Okay. And what would it go to then?
Well, October 1st, if council, if I understand the proposed amendment, council, if it's adopted, again, it's reflected on page 10-3 of your council packet, it would go, the system maintenance fee would go up to $6.11, which was previously approved by council to become effective April 1st. We're now just simply saying it would become effective October 1st. And the water utility charge would be $6.70 per 1,000 gallons.
We're saving 12 cents and 13 cents.
13 cents per 1,000 gallons for the user charge. The system maintenance fee is a flat dollar amount.
If I could, on the average utility bill, by keeping the water rate the same and the sewer rate the same until October 1st, the average resident will see a savings of $2.41 a month.
Excuse me, Jen. The, the sewer rate, we're talking about still being effective July 1st. It was the water rate only.
So, water rate would just be 90 cents a month is the savings that, that the average citizen would see on the water bill.
Okay. So, we're past the point of saving them more money. Now, if we vote yes, an affirmative, that means that the rates will go in effect July 1st, except for water, which will be extended to October. If we vote in the negative, that means all rates will increase when, immediately?
If we vote in the negative, and, and it's, it doesn't make a lot of sense when you first hear it, but the way we did it in April, and we now looking at it for July, a no vote would make the rate increase retroactive to April 1st.
And, and Mayor, just that, that is how the ordinance is written, that it would be an effective date of April 1st. Staff would suggest that because, Mayor, you, you made an emergency declaration that applied to the governor's emergency orders, we would say that we could probably make it, delay it, make it effective immediately, rather than retroactively, just to link it towards your emergency declaration, perhaps. But it's, it's not exactly as clear-cut as we would like.
Yeah, I, I understand. I just want to make, make sure, know the letter of the law for the ordinance. Yes, we can, we can do that so that there's no retroactive on that. But I'm going to leave it up to the legal to come up with that machination.
And that, that, back to Mr. Nord's question, that would be if council rejected the proposal that's on the table.
Right. Exactly. I think, I think we have a clear understanding of what we're doing here, so.
Yeah. Well, my comments are then, voting yes delays it, voting no potentially makes it retroactive, and they lose, and then citizens lose any benefit, or any additional benefit.
I, I don't think that's what we're suggesting here.
No, but I'm saying that if I vote, if, if we vote no, that makes this increase happen immediately rather than delaying it.
I think the understanding from the, from your fellow council members is that's not going to be the case. If a council member disagrees or legal disagrees, and I'm going to Ms. Cummings, she's got her hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of asked this before we voted, but I didn't get my hand raised in enough time, because I, I just felt like October was a little bit much of a delay, considering we were looking more at the summer, which is typically your peak month would be July, and wanted to really ask why October versus August or September, because typically July is your, your more peak month where you might see more of that usage, even for grass. Because I know I water my, but more typically in July, because it's typically hotter, versus October being that far pushed out. I know a lot of places are back to work, too. That's another thing. Like, so these things are, what I was thinking about as far as pushing it out, is not, I didn't understand, or, I mean, I understood where the perspective was. I was just not comfortable with that month, in particular knowing that there's some months where they'll see some, some less usage, like August or September, to be able to begin.
Well, to throw in another water pun here, that ship has sailed. We voted on that, so we'll-
That's, that's fine.
We'll have to move on from that.
Okay.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks. And just wanted to echo Ms. Cummings' remarks, since I didn't have the chance to make them second round. Same thing, I didn't understand why October was, was the day, given the water use history, on average every year seems to be so high in the summertime, regardless of Illinois State University really not being here, so really not a consequence for our water uses here in Normal. And, yeah, bring it-
Let's not have discussion on-
Yeah.
Let's move on.
Yeah. So, I want to make sure I'm clear, what our vote is about to be. So, I'm crystal clear. Voting yes supports the original proposal with the amendment that passed.
Correct.
Yep. Got it. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
And my apologies, Mayor, but I do wish to clarify, as an accountant, I tend to think in quarters. And October 1st is three months from July 1st, and it's a, for me, it's a logical breakpoint for financial decisions, so.
Well, I thought as an accountant, you were referring to 25-cent pieces. I couldn't pass that up. Further on this item, please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Mr. Nord?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Coos?
Aye. The amended resolution or ordinance is approved. Item 11 is a resolution waiving bids and authorizing the renewal of a subscription to Microsoft Office 365 through the state joint purchasing program from CW, CDW, at the annual cost of $91,141.69. We have approval?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item. Please call the roll.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Everybody popped up after a moment of silence. Ms. Smith?
Who did you call on, sir?
You.
I had requested, if it was possible, to break this cost down into a per-user rate, and I, I made the request late, and I was wondering if that information is now available. That would be very helpful.
Ms. Smith, Vasu Gataraju, Ms. Gataraju is on the line. She does have some information per, in terms of a per-user charge based on the type of license. So that's as far as we got at this point. So I will ask Ms. Gataraju to join us.
Absolutely. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
So, yes, Ms. Smith, we do, in your quote attached to the packet, you have, there are three types of licenses, E1, E3, and E5 licenses. So depending on the type of license, as per the state agreement, because we are piggybacking on that agreement, we get some of those licenses that are subsidized cost. So for E1 licenses, we get subsidized costs for about 169 of those. And for those, the price per user per year is $65.28. And we have additional 50 of E1 licenses, and those are at $79.12 per user. So those are our lowest-cost licensing types. And for E3s, we get about 220 of them at a subsidized price, and we are requesting for 205 of those licenses for E3, and they come at $184.62 per user per year. And the last type of license is E5, which comes with enhanced functionality. And we have 24 of those licenses, and those are at $376 per user.
Okay. That's all I asked. I had to go to my spouse, who is my tech support, and he was the one that was pointing out that that would be useful information, and that the first one that you identified is comparable to what State Farm is paying for, for their software. So, thank you.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. And I understand the challenge in trying to figure out your software licensing. I used to do that, and it is a chore and very, very confusing. A question I have is, this was not formally bid out. What was the reason for not preparing just a formal bid?
So, we actually reached out to several resellers of these licenses, and because of the state agreement, we have not received any bid that even came close to the enterprise agreement. So, for about, I, we have reached out to over seven or eight different resellers, and none of the bids are comparable to what we are getting as part of this enterprise agreement.
Okay, just-
Acting on the state's contract.
And we have found, I'm sorry, Mr. Nord.
I was just going to say that I understand the state may have fantastic prices, just for transparency and, you know, for the citizens. I would just request, if we go through that step of getting numbers, just document it that we did a formal bid, so everybody can see those numbers and see that this is the most favorable pricing.
We didn't conduct a formal bid. We did not find that was necessary. We, we don't do that staff and time-intensive process when we have the ability to use the state joint purchasing avenue. So, what Ms. Gataraju did was had the information from the state joint purchasing, which is available to all municipalities. That's why we have such good pricing through that opportunity. And she compared the state joint purchasing pricing through the CW, CDW, with what some private enterprises could offer and found that they couldn't compare. So there was no reason to go through a pri, a public bidding process.
Yeah. I mean, isn't this just, you put your number of licenses together on a sheet, email it off, and ask them to bid on it?
Our bid process is a little more complex than that. Basically, what you would be asking would be more along the lines of just getting a quote. A formal bid process is very time-intensive, and frankly, we didn't think it was necessary. We've gotten very good pricing through the state joint purchasing and through other joint purchasing opportunities, which are available to government entities. So we tried to take advantage of that as much as possible. And we, in order to make sure we're getting good pricing, we compared, so.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, you know, but, but even going out and shopping this, right, is, is above policy. And so, when we, when we frame up what staff's job, and, and what they did is go above policy and made sure and verified that they have the best rate. And so, they did a great job making sure that they're getting the most bang for our taxpayers' dollars. And, and that's partly what we're here to help ensure. And so, frankly, thank you to staff for going above and beyond to ensure that that purchasing program is in fact, a really good deal, and the best one that we can do out there. So, I- uh, I think I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of of staffs, but I also appreciate that you're not going through a lengthy uh, RFP when you really all you had to do is verify that you've got the best pricing. So you you didn't waste a bunch of time and taxpayer dollars on staff time and you made sure that we uh, have the best pricing. Uh, really appreciate you guys doing that and taking those extra steps once in a while to verify that those contracts are in fact really good pricing. Uh, I'm supportive. Thank you.
Ms. Loren?
Yes, thank you. You know, I I'm really would just echo what Mr. McCarthy said there. I think we have to be careful not to get so granular that we end up being more wasteful of taxpayer dollars. And in this case, I think that might be the direction um, that's being suggested to do increased research and analysis and using staff time in a way that's just gonna cost more money than the reward of of a better price. Staff has done their homework and I support what they've put forward.
Further on this item? Uh, Mr. Nord?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear that I was not asking to bypass any policy. The policy that the councils before had put in place was anything over twenty-five thousand dollars, there was a bid put on. My question was why are we not following the policy?
Mr. Nord, you asked this question multiple times on on mul- multiple efforts and and actions that uh, staff has done. Uh, and frankly, uh, it troubles me that you second guess their decision-making almost every meeting that we have. That you do not trust them to do the right job. You do not trust them to get the best price. You do not trust their professionalism. And it's certainly, you're right, it's an elected official to do that, but uh, I find it offensive.
Well, I did not question trust right now. I just asked why we didn't follow the policy. And that is it, so I take offense that you phrased it that way.
Uh, please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Loren?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item twelve is an ordinance amending Division seven of Chapter eight of the municipal code concerning trees and shrubs.
So move.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Smith gets uh, out the gate first, followed closely by Mr. Preston.
I'll take it.
Uh, discussion on this item. Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Loren? Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. The ordinance is approved. Uh, before taking a motion for adjournment or other council comments or concerns. Um, yes, there are. And uh, Mr. McCarthy, then Mr. Nord.
Thank you, Mayor. Trying to do a good job of lowering my hand this meeting. I've been bad at that. Um, yeah, just a a couple of comments from uh, sharing from residents and um, my wife and I went out uh, to dinner the first time in the town of Normal since endemic and closed out and just sharing some of those thoughts. I guess first I want to say thanks to the residents of the town of Normal uh, for your patience through all of this and for following guidelines. When we were out, uh, it seemed like everybody was working hard to use social distancing and wearing masks and uh, were generally seemed to be having a good time. Uh, and the restaurants and the small businesses were doing a great job trying to make sure that they were keeping everybody safe and and being able to open up uh, for business. And uh, so I think uh, so far, from what I've seen in the limited, I've been out there, uh, uh, really thanks to everybody for trying to be conscientious and thanks for being willing to come out and patronize our local businesses because it's really making a difference for different independent business owners I talked to in Uptown Normal the last week. Uh, although not certainly back to normal, I'm very appreciative that they have the opportunity to be open and starting to earn a living. So um, to that, I want to say that thank you to staff and town. Uh, everybody I spoke to said they had been contacted and been in touch with the town and I'm really appreciated the town trying to make a simple process and being as supportive of as they could. Uh, so they could start to earn a living again. Everybody was universally thankful. Uh, understanding that it's nowhere close to normal or perfect, but uh, but that is an opportunity. Appreciate the town supporting that. Uh, also, I guess I want to say, uh, um, uh, Ms. Reese let us know that our COVID dashboard was live uh, on the town website and I've already shared that already with a few folks that have already responded that they appreciate that we here locally have a dashboard where it's all unified that town residents can go to one spot uh, on the town website to try to keep track of all of that stuff from the various uh, sources. Um, business owners and residents alike and uh, also kudos to staff for uh, using our town's social media uh, accounts to try to keep our residents up to date and keep information flowing. Uh, I know that's not easy, but uh, you guys have clearly been spending a lot of time and effort uh, trying to keep information flowing to our residents to keep them informed about what we're doing. What the latest information is about the disease, our current phase and and the like and uh, uh, if nobody's telling you, uh, residents are appreciative. So thanks for all of it.
Mr. Nord?
Um, I'm going to say that governments at all level need to be better listeners and more inclusive of the citizens we represent. We need to keep in mind that everyone that asks questions or chooses a different path that's counter to the status quo should be given the benefit of the doubt and not treated as the opposition. Um, last week, the planning commission and this council were emailed or otherwise communicated with regarding some concerns and efforts that a group of neighbors, many who have called Normal home for decades and happen to live in the area of One Normal Plaza. Um, over a month ago, this council tasked the town staff to compile information, get citizen input, uh, potential zoning change which may impact their neighborhood. Well, the following is a response to those communications. For those in the public that are watching um, and are interested in the response that I'm referring to, you'll need to request what this is from the town. But the council is already aware of this. Now, as the town manager speculated, I was asked by the residents of One Normal Plaza area to attend a neighborhood meeting that they set up regarding the changes to the proposed or the proposed changes to One Normal Plaza. And you can review my town emails to verify that this request for attendance and communication came directly and was initiated by our constituents. In attendance were about twenty residents, including Mark Terratelli, who's a concerned resident and lives in that part of Normal. And Mike Metica, a planning commission member and concerned resident who also lives in that part of Normal. The role of elected and appointed representatives is to be involved and communicate directly with those we represent, especially if they ask us for assistance. Tenant nine of the ICMA and IL CMA Code of Ethics says that a town manager member is encouraged or is to encourage communication between citizens and all local government officers. Tenant four states that the town manager is to ensure that all the people within their jurisdiction have the ability to actively engage with their local government. The member should strive to eliminate barriers to public involvement in decisions, programs, and services. Last council meeting, we approved the taxpayers to uh, or we the last council meeting, we approved taxpayers to pay the dues for these organizations. And they both share the same Code of Ethics. So it's very reasonable to assume that these ethics would apply to government in Normal as well. While various groups and individuals in our community have long stated they have no voice in Normal's government, which I contend is a valid and accurate complaint. Um, they cannot talk at a council meeting without it being on the agenda. Um, at a time in history when so many across the country are upset and protesting that their government refuses to listen to their voices, I believe that some recommendations from staff that Normals elected and appointed representatives not be directly involved with their constituents during the very time when it's necessary and appropriate for these voices to be heard is dangerous. It is an insult to representative former government. In Bloomington and other towns, council members are encouraged to interact with their constituents. And many regularly do. I fear the impact of the comments sent to us all and the planning commission, including voices, including voices voicing issues with Mr. Terratelli and myself being in being in attendance in this group meeting and and omitting Mr. Metica's attendance will have tainted or painted a political bias among the council members and commissioners interpretation regarding the validity of the residents' concerns. After discussion with Mr. Terratelli regarding these comments, I can attest our intention of being involved was out of genuine concern for our community and its residents. While I have not asked Mr. Metica directly, the discussion and interaction he engaged in with the attendees led me to believe he has the same community-driven concerns. Mark Terratelli is not acting as this group's spokesperson, Mark and his family or residents in that part of Normal. Mark was invited to the meeting with only an hour to notice. His contact with staff was solely for the purpose of conveying the need for a large venue to allow social distancing for a lot of the residents who wish to speak, but they're concerned about being in a confined space. This was an open conversation sparked by the group and included direct discussions with Mr. Metica on the process and potential to accommodate. Per my subsequent conversation with Mr. Terratelli, he did not inquire for his own state or representative town staff, the neighbors, or anyone, but he was a spokesperson or to any of the details of this ordinance that those folks may or may not have concern with. My recommendation to the citizen group was to communicate directly with the town staff and the planning and the planning commission before the item comes to the council for a vote for a final vote. I also recommended that they communicate with staff and receive instruction for their petition so it can be recognized by their government and council as legitimate public input. I fear if they wait for the council meeting to speak, it will be argued that the council should neither overturn nor change the recommendation of town staff and the planning commission. The residents were also concerned their emails to staff would not be shared with this with with decision makers. As some of the attendees stated, town staff told them emails would not be shared with commissioners and would not be sent to council unless the author specifically instructed them to share. Residents should not be expected to know the inner workings of government or who the right person is. They should be giving information. Staff recommendations and public input that is gathered and filtered exclusively by town staff should not continue to be the only valid information recognized and used by the community's planning commission or their council. I am sure Mr. Metica can attest to the discussion and the validity of the residents' concerns. The residents have an honest concern for their neighborhood and their town. They have chosen to be involved in in their governance of an issue which will impact their daily lives. I'm disappointed that the assumptions that the citizens' real concerns and the communication has now introduced a political bias. I hope this council, the planning commission, and the town manager reaches out to these residents in the neighborhood directly and actively listens to their concerns firsthand. It is our ethical duty to listen and put the interests of the citizens before any preconceived agenda. The town has given these citizens and their issues unequal treatment. The mayor and council members and other council members can freely interact with citizens and often have community engagement events with businesses and various citizens groups, many funded and organized by the town. But in this case, it seems to be discouraged for elected and appointed representatives to have direct citizens' engagement with this group. Evidence by the fact that even legal counsel was brought in to discriminate the citizen discourse as negative. At a time in our country when there is so much unrest that people have no voice in government, we need to involve our citizens more now than ever and find ways, instead of finding ways to discredit their concern or discourage inclusion with the representatives. If it is the position of staff or this council, the representatives should not engage directly with the public, then please bring a policy forward for public discussion and vote. Now, to be open and transparent with staff, my elected and appointed colleagues and the public, I have been asked to attend additional constituent meetings. I will attend and communicate directly with the public at these. These are the people who I work for, I answer to, and represent, and we all should follow that same model, that that same thought. How can any of us possibly know how to represent our constituents if we are not allowed to take time to listen to them when they ask? Thank you.
That's quite a speech you read there, Mr. Uh, Mr. Nord, and my takeaway is that you feel that uh, um, just to be clear, that the current council, other than yourself and the current staff, uh, is not open to communications with the general public and in fact shuns the communications with the general public.
Um, no, I would say read the email that was sent to us.
Excuse me, I think, uh, let me finish my thought. Um, I'm gonna ask Ms. Cummings, um, you live in this neighborhood. Were you asked to attend this meeting?
I was not. I I'm but I'm never asked. It's uh, it's a very unusual, excuse me if you don't mind, but nobody ever asked me um, in any situation to attend any meetings. Um, I have some people who reach out to me, but I, for some reason, I feel like constituents don't know how to ask me my opinion on things directly. Um, if we be very honest, because I've mentioned it in this meeting um, about whether or not my availability over and over again. When people have reached out to me, I have taken off from my job to meet with residents. So you're not the only um, person on this council. And I actually a lot of times take time that I don't have to do stuff like that for our residents. So I'm highly offended that you sit here as the savior of Normal to say that no one else, when I have put my life on the line, my livelihood on the line numerous of times, even when I've had managers to say I have to take the time and lose time, like not get paid for it. So to to say that right now, I I would have to highly disagree with you. Now, whether people choose to include me or not, that is their choice. But I'm always open, not only with them, with staff, any other council member, to have a conversation with anyone. And I feel highly offended that you're even remotely trying to put what we're seeing as social um, social justice unrest equal to how somebody may feel or the their own personal perception about us as a council. Those are two totally different things and I would ask that you not do that. Thank you.
Mrs. Loren? You had your hand raised.
Yes, I do, and I was gonna lower that and I'm mute. Alrighty, um, I do have a couple of other concerns, but obviously um, Mr. Nord's prepared statement does does beg a response. Um, Mr. Nord, that statement does nothing but cause division. Let me just say that again. It does nothing but cause division, as you can see already by by reaction. Um, it causes division because it's full of subjectivity and opinion and very slim on fact. I was not asked to attend this meeting either. I didn't even know it occurred until it was referenced in an email. I live very close to this place too. I have friends that live in that particular community nearby. I I'm just speechless that you position yourself here on public record as the only one that took time to go to this meeting. You were the only one potentially invited. Um, as a planning, former planning commissioner, and I shared this with a resident who did reach out to me by email. I respect the process of the planning commission. And that is that until that process concludes with all of the facts and all of the public testimony that is built into the planning commission process, those of us on council need to give them a wide berth to do their job. And I would hazard to guess that Mr. Metica was there as a very dedicated planning commissioner, and so he should be. Not saying it's required, but he was there clearly going above and beyond. It would not be viewed by a planning commissioner. by a planning commissioner as good form for a council member to be there. Now, the residents don't know that. You probably didn't know that as never being on the planning commission. And so you went. That's okay. You went as a concerned elected official. That's fine. But please respect the fact that I have the experience that I do. And even if I had been invited, I might have chosen not to go to that particular meeting and instead maybe talk with residents one-on-one and be a little more discreet with my involvement in the process. There have been very few times since I've left the planning commission in 2015 that I've gone to a planning commission meeting. I can think of two situations. Been a lot of planning commission meetings since then. So I would really, really ask that you maybe follow up with me individually and let us maybe come to some reconciliation over this very divisive statement that you put forward. And the only other thing I'll say on that before I get to my own concerns is that Ms. Reese does not create barriers in communication. She is extremely professional as a city manager. And any accusations that would suggest that she would be a barrier in any way to council members communicating citizens is categorically wrong, categorically wrong. Now, having said that, I want to pivot to something a little more seasonal in nature. I have been engaging with some constituents as well who have been noticing that some of our landscaping and mowing of our public areas are not being attended to as well as maybe seasons in the past. And I happen to believe that our public, our staff, our Parks and Rec staff take great pride in maintaining the beauty and the aesthetics of this community in all common grounds. And so I believe that they are probably frustrated too that maybe there are some areas that they're not keeping up with. I believe, from what I understand, that we certainly got off to a slower start this spring with not hiring as many seasonal workers, and that may be contributing to some of the looking behind in our upkeep of some of the mowing and trimming and so forth. So I just want to acknowledge that that is probably the case to those who have expressed that concern. I would encourage them to help us be eyes and ears for areas that maybe are looking a bit more overgrown than they should and reach out to City Hall directly. If you want to reach out to any one of us on council, we can help get the word there. And I just want to also say to staff of the seasonal workers that I know you're probably busting your tails out there and are frustrated when you can't keep up with everything, and we know that you're trying. Point two of a total of three, be a little bit shorter. I have noticed, and it's been brought to my attention by some who live nearby, the Ironwood Golf Course, that some dress code enforcement has not been happening. This too may be a result of some fewer seasonal workers, maybe ranger-type folks. We've been seeing some people certainly in non-collared shirts and sometimes even no shirts. So that may be something that the Parks and Rec Golf Course folks want to take a look at. And lastly, I know that several of us were contacted by a resident or more, but I was at least contacted by one, interested in knowing if there will be any lap pool swimming availability in this community. And I know we have chosen not to open our pools, but as we progress into the warmer months and maybe some lifting of some restrictions come into play, I'd be interested in discussing with staff some options, maybe of other resources, maybe it's with some of the school swimming pools. I don't know, you know, just looking for other options to help some of the residents where we can, if we can, make that happen. So just wanted to offer that up as a question as well. With that, I will conclude my seasonal.
Ms. Smith.
I just wanted to express some thanks to some very dedicated nonprofit groups here in town that have done yeoman's work on connecting with a challenged population of special-needs citizens. The Penguin Project was valued in their efforts to try to continue with the season and ultimately were not able to. But despite that, they stayed connected with their artists and mentors and even had an unopening weekend, complete with a video. And that meant so much in my household, as I'm sure it did in the others, to have that connection. Mark First is moving forward with a transition program for the summer. Easter Seals is doing what they can to provide at least day camps and some family camps. And so it's one of the reasons we feel so connected to this community because there is such an acceptance of this population as a part of the community. And I just thank them so much for all the efforts they've made to be aware of and do their best to adapt to the needs under some very challenging circumstances. And I would encourage anyone with special-need individual in your household to connect with them and see if there's any opportunities for services that you might be missing out on. But thank you. Gracias. Merci beaucoup.
Mr. McCarthy, did you have your hand up or did you not drop it?
Yeah, I just, a little bit of a response after that, since I was first. I just want to echo a couple of points that Ms. Lorenz made very, very briefly. One is, I want to concur that Ms. Reese goes way above and beyond in communication in my almost eight years on the council here. Anytime I've asked or made a request for communication, Ms. Reese has been on top of it and very quickly and also quick to respond to me when I need information to help respond back to any citizens. So I see zero evidence that she inhibits communication in any way. My first read of communication is that Ms. Reese specifically tried to inform and inform us of potential legal issues around the meeting that was discussed, to try to make sure, as Ms. Lorenz did, educate us on the nuances of council role versus planning commission roles versus the planning commission process. And certainly there was no, nothing that would suggest that, you know, she believes that councils shouldn't be interacting with the public. That's just simply not there. And so I just want to make sure that I had the opportunity to show that support. Thank you.
I'm just going to say briefly for the record, I talked to Mr. Matika about the meeting and afterwards, and we talked about some ideas, understanding people's concerns about social distancing and planning commission process. And I've got some ideas I'll be discussing with Ms. Reese on how we might do that to satisfy that situation. Motion for adjournment.
No, Mayor Kuss.
I'm sorry.
Mayor Kuss, if I could make just a couple of statements. First, in regard to the Microsoft licensing agreement that council adopted just earlier in your agenda this evening, Mr. Nord made a comment that staff didn't follow the procurement policy. And I just, for the record, want to make it absolutely clear that staff did, in fact, follow the procurement policy. There is an option in the town's procurement policy that says the purchase of items available through an approved joint purchasing agreement may be made without obtaining quotes or bids or prior council approval. We use joint purchasing options all the time. Those are purchasing and procurement opportunities that are available to government entities where typically you get the best pricing. So our procurement policy does allow for us to use joint purchasing. It does allow us to make procurement through this process without formal bids or even quotations. So I don't feel comfortable about it being stated that staff did not follow the procurement policy because that would not be legal. We did, in fact, legally follow our policy. The other thing I just wanted to mention is I do appreciate Mr. Nord quoting both the ICMA and IL CMA, which stands for the International City and County Management Association and the Illinois City and County Management Association Code of Ethics. The Code of Ethics is very important to our profession. Both Mr. Hanson and I sign off on those Code of Ethics, and I have served as a member of the Professional Code of Conduct Committee for ICMA for many, many years. And as such, I agree and appreciate council members knowing our Code of Ethics. It is very important to us. In that regard, I think many council members know that staff have participated in neighborhood meetings, countless neighborhood meetings, where we have sat in people's living rooms to talk about issues. Typically, council members invite staff to these meetings so that we can respond on the spot, we can provide information, and eliminate any confusion or misinformation. So I will simply put out there that staff is always willing to participate in neighborhood meetings whenever we are invited. And if there are any questions, I don't believe we need to get to this point right now, but one of the communications I think that was referenced in Mr. Nord's comments may have been communication from the legal department. We're fortunate enough to have very high-quality legal department, legal staff right here in the office, providing us guidance and advice. Sometimes that guidance and legal advice pertains to boundaries relative to the planning commission being a quasi-judicial body. And Mr. Day has provided information to both the planning commission members and, I believe, council members, just to clarify, to make sure all of our legal boundaries are adhered to. So if council does have any questions in that regard, Mr. Day can certainly answer those. But I just wanted to put that out there to make sure everyone understands what kind of communications we're talking about.
Thank you. Now I'll take a motion for adjournment. Oh, Mr. Preston.
Glad I snuck it in there in time. I'll be, I'll be real quick. Thanks, Mayor. Just in response to Ms. Reese's comments, she sparked a very good memory for me when she had talked about staff actually going and sitting in the living rooms of residents. I've got one great example that I wanted to share before we close up here tonight. A couple of years ago, there was a group of residents in the neighborhood that, you know, it sounds like somewhat similar to the situation that was referenced earlier, but that were all very focused on a town issue that was specifically impacting that neighborhood. And not only when we put together this little neighborhood meeting, did staff participate and show up, but Ms. Reese was there, two, if I'm not mistaken, two or three different department heads, as well as another staff support as well, to make sure it was much like actually a council meeting in that as residents had questions that came up about this issue, every subject matter expert on staff, the leadership was there in the room to talk with residents, to make sure that information was shared, questions were answered, and discussions and back and forth took place. And I can think of no better service to our residents, and those are experts, every ear that is pertinent in the decision-making process, and engage in that in their living room upon the request. So thanks to Ms. Reese and all of our staff for that, which is just one of many, many examples of great constituent in public service. And with that, if I may have the honor, I would move, we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. That was a, that's the most original adjournment message I've heard. Thank you, Scott. Motion and a second, please call the ball.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Cummings.
Aye.
Mr. Nord.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.